Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I expect.
Let's do the agents through the flyer. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Paulie.
Here.
Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers here. Trustee Crowe.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. Uh, this is the point of the time. Is there a approval or motion to approve the agenda as presented? Additions, corrections, or substitutions? Yes, trustee Paul.
I'd like to be added to the agenda. I'm a member of the fire committee and I'd like to speak to the board regarding fire committee.
Okay. New business number three. Or department committee, I guess. Are there any other additions, corrections, substitutions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So.
We have a motion to approve the amended agenda. Is there support? Or it's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Uh, this is the first opportunity for public comment. Uh, if you have public comments, uh, we'll have you stand at the podium, state your name for the record. Uh, we also have a, a three-minute, uh, limit. Uh, this first, uh, uh, public comment is for all agenda items. The second public comment is for an open forum, if you will. Um, and I would make note that we do have a quick closed session for the second public comment, just so that you're cognizant of that. Uh, with that being said, if there's anybody in person that has a public comment, please send to the podium and state your name for the record. Seeing no public comment in person at this point. Is there anybody online? Seeing no public comment. We'll move forward to the payment of the bills. Is there a motion to make payment of the bills?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion on the table to make payment of the bills. Is there support? I'll support it. Motion and support on the table. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward to the, the minutes of April 12th, 2022, our regular scheduled meeting. Is there any, uh, corrections or comments to the minutes as presented? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of, uh, April 12th, 2022. We have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of April 12th. Is there support?
Support.
We have motion and support on the table, uh, for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minute signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same. And it's approved. Moving forward to the correspondence as presented, uh, we have four, four pieces. Uh, minutes of the plan, or the road commission, uh, the road reported, the road commission. Uh, ordinance, uh, 150 letter from Alpena County, State of Michigan, uh, farmland and open space preservation program. I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the correspondence as presented.
Some more.
We have a motion on the table and supported for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of receiving and file the correspondence signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Correspondence has been received and filed. Moving forward to old business, uh, adoption of proposed ordinance of 150, zoning ordinance amendment. It was open. At this point in time, we had introduced, um, the ordinance at our previous meeting.
I'd like to make a motion. Well, is it on the, it's on the table now, right?
It's on the table.
So I'd like to make a motion to amend. All I can refer to here is number 12 on page eight. I'd like to include religious facilities and I put in parentheses. For example, church buildings, temples, mosques, or other like facilities. In the facilities, there is a, uh, facilities requiring at least 750 feet of separation. That's based on the current separation part of that paragraph.
So you're on page eight of nine, uh, section 12, correct separation distances.
Yeah, I guess it's number 12. I don't know if it's section 12.
Yeah, number 12. We'll, we'll go with that. Um, okay, so we have.
Could you repeat, read that again?
I sure, I could try. I wasn't reading my own writing very well. Uh, motion to amend that, that paragraph 12 or section 12 on page eight. To have that section include religious facilities to be added. And for example, church buildings, temples, mosques, or other like facilities. Close parentheses, in the facilities requiring, or in the portion requiring 750 feet of separation.
Russ, um, if I read that section now, then I'm gonna have you reread that. Marijuana facilities or adult use marijuana establishments shall not be located within 750 feet of any building used for education, comma, childcare, comma, or addiction treatment purposes, or a park. Uh, where would you like to add?
I think just before the park, probably is what I was thinking.
Okay, so, or, uh, or, or, yeah, so.
And I don't know if it should just say church, churches, because that kind of connotes.
Here's what the city did.
Specific religion.
The city stated 250 feet, some different spacing, of any place of worship. Um, a childcare centers, addiction clinics, or treatment facilities, and they had some specific city, uh, related uses. They use the term for place of worship.
I think that works.
You're, you're friendly to your own motions.
Yeah, that is the motion.
So we're just.
Place of worship.
So.
So all other, you're making a motion to approve this agenda. I mean, this.
I'm not, I'm not, not making a motion to approve the ordinance. That'll come after the, any amendments to it.
So we have a motion to the amendment in section 12. That's current.
It's, it's an amendment to the, the way it reads right now.
There it's correct. So we have a motion to include place of worship with the same linear feet to section 12.
That's correct. Thanks, Tim. That works.
Just one little kind of correction goes with that. If you go over to page nine, item D, it mentions 500 feet there again, which I believe is an oversight.
It's an oversight. Norm, thanks for, uh, pointing that out. I had it on my list to do so. So that would be.
Seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty to be consistent with, uh, the prior provision.
We have a motion.
So we have, we have a motion on the table, uh, to amend section 12 to include places of worship at 750 linear feet. Is there support to?
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. Excuse me. Further discussion?
I guess since I'm supporting it, I should say something. I, I think that was, uh. I'm glad the city, uh, put that in theirs as well, even though it's a smaller distance. Um, I, I think that was left out of the state law and to me it should not have been. And, uh. Uh, and I just felt it was an oversight of planning. I don't know that it was anything. Unless it was intentionally amended, I don't think it was at that level. So I just believe it was something that, uh, we should add for our community.
No, I think everybody was in agreement to that. So we have a motion and support to the amendment to section 12, uh, further discussion. And seeing none.
Are we also making amendment to D on page nine?
Yeah, I think that was a correction.
Yeah, that was more of a typo.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that in the motion. Just section 12 and.
Uh, well then, roll call to the amendment.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
No.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay.
I have a second motion.
Well, by all means, sir, you have a motion.
I also make a motion to remove, uh, micro businesses from the allowable businesses under the ordinance.
Yeah, I think had, uh, from our three, is that what you're referring to?
No, no.
All, all together. Oh.
Could you, to remove?
The micro business license from all zoning.
Well, and you know, that's gonna be in our regulatory ordinance. That's where we determine the amount and type.
So that'd be in 151?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Well, it did be involved.
We don't have, yeah, I think it was being both of it.
No.
We have micro business and the, the language.
We're allowing them as a special use. Okay, yep, that would be both them.
So we'll stick to 150 right now. And there, there's a, a motion, uh, to, uh, remove the micro business licensure from all the zoning in the township, correct?
Yes.
We have a motion on the table to remove the micro business license from all zones within the township. Is there support? I'll support. It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Can you refresh me on what the micro business is?
The micro business is, uh, was the state's attempt after the fact to, uh, allow the opportunity for uh, more of a regional, more of a local presence in the market, given the considerations that the economic backing uh, removes a lot of opportunity from rural communities. So the, the micro business was allowed to kind of hopefully bridge that gap, uh, but it's actually a self-sustaining uh, umbrella to all licenses, to where they can grow, they can process and sell, uh, in one location.
Mostly for home-based, I believe.
Primarily, but it's a non, it's, it's pretty much a non-use licensure throughout the state.
Now, the way our ordinance is written currently, does it allow those home, those micro businesses in a residential?
No, that was made very, very clear.
So it wasn't just our three, it was all our?
All ours.
Okay.
And I'll remind, even all the licenses that are within ordinance 150, there's six, potentially now with the motion on the table, that would make it the five. Um, they are all special use set planning. So.
So they have to get a permit from the planning.
They still have to go through the. So we have a motion on the table to remove micro business, uh, and support further discussion.
My concern with this is that, and, and, and I, along with this statement comes a question really, is, uh. Norm, you were on the planning commission. I did not read the ordinance as it came to us. Uh, to exclude outdoor grows for micro businesses. It seemed to be specific to only certain other types of businesses.
No outdoor growing, period.
Okay, well, if that's, if that's the interpretation and that's the way it correctly reads then, but I thought there was a limitation on the specifics of the outdoor growth. So that's one of my concerns is outdoor growths. Uh, if we are across the board limiting outdoor grows, I only feel slightly better, but you know, I, I will tell you that looking at the Colorado experience. And this goes more to the state law than ours, but still, we're just adding to it. After they legalized marijuana use in, uh, 2013 or 14 in, in Colorado. Marijuana use for ages 12 and older increased 58% and is 78% higher than the national average. My big concern here is children. Uh, I remember how we could get into pumpkin patches and hot watermelon patches when I was a kid. Uh, I don't want kids to be able to have access to this. And the fact that, uh, you know, I don't know what Colorado allows in terms of indoor or outdoor growing. But I just know that there's ways to get into outdoor grow operations, uh, that would be very concerning to me for youth.
Yeah, trustee Paul.
Uh, page eight, item number six is specifically says, says, excuse me. Says the growth and cultivation of marijuana outdoors is not permitted, but we don't have any control over, if I'm correct, on the folks that are going to grow it at their own home.
For personal use.
Yeah, personally, yeah.
Yeah, if they're not licensed, they're not supposed to sell them, right? Unless they have those old cards.
So we, we have it in.
Yeah, hardly, I think almost everybody's abandoned their, their old medical marijuana cards, because why bother if you're just using it for recreation? But, so that's, that's the basis.
But I, I think that's a, that's a broad statement. We, we're making speculations of who uses medical versus rec and what is the purpose.
I just don't think there's many medical cards anymore, because they're too expensive and too complicated to get. That's my.
So we have a motion and support to remove the micro business from all zoning. Further discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
No.
Clerk Palavich, no. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
No. Are there any other amendments to ordinance 150 to be? Yes, trustee Paul.
I, I don't think it's in there, but R3 is to be removed for all licensures.
Yep.
But it says it's recommended, but I don't see where specifically planning commission has recommended removing R3 from this amendment.
Yep.
Have we removed it? I don't see where to remove.
We can just simply make sure that we, uh, add it as a motion to, to define it.
I'll point it out to Denise Klein when we finalize the, uh, the form of the motion, but the planning commission, part of its recommendation to this board was to remove that wording. So you're getting the removed.
I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Not recommended.
Yep. Okay. With that being said, is there, I'd entertain a motion to move forward with ordinance 150 with the amendments as presented?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with ordinance 150 with, to approve ordinance 150 with the amendments. So we have a motion on the table. Is there support? I'll support it. Further discussion? Uh, trustee Paul.
Making sense.
No.
After the discussion.
I guess, I don't know if I missed something. Um, but we did two motions and then we were, was the last motion or no, because we did the vote and then we did another motion to approve the ordinance, right?
No.
No.
We're doing, we're doing the motion right now to approve the ordinance.
As, as it is. Motions to, to, for amendments.
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah. With amendment.
But we haven't done the motion yet to approve the ordinance with the changes.
That's what we're working on right now.
Well, that's why I was confused.
The motion was made by trustee Paulie to approve ordinance 150 with the amendments.
Okay.
And that was supported by supervisor Skibby.
Okay.
Roll call.
Well, I, I thought we were gonna.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, I got.
I thought that was what Laura was wanting.
Well, I just wanted some clarification.
I, I oppose the ordinance, uh, and, and I think I stated why, but I'll say a couple of things again. Uh, as I mentioned, from the Colorado experience, I think there's reason to oppose it, but, uh, that argument probably has come and gone to state level. So it boils down for me to two things, uh, being, coming out of law enforcement. I, I recognize the difficulty in, in, uh, trying to protect citizens that are driving, uh, from citizens who are using and driving. Uh, we just don't have a good, and I don't know that we ever can get a good roadside test like we have for alcohol. So enforcement, uh, and, and, uh, and even civil, uh, civil liabilities of protecting our citizens from injury and death, uh, through, uh, civil liability is going to be much more difficult with marijuana than it is with alcohol. Uh, in addition, uh, you know, the marijuana, uh, the, uh, on that point itself, the experience in Colorado is that, uh, they went from 55, uh, deaths in 2013 as a result of marijuana usage of, of motor vehicle drivers to 115 in 2018. So that's a pretty significant increase there. Additionally, um. For me, it's mostly about what kind of community do I want to live in? I'm going to be driving by, um, marijuana shops that are gonna be right in the city of Alpena. And I recognize that all of us drive through the city of Alpena. It's not, that is, offends me. It's that, how many more do we need? And, uh, we're in a township that surrounds the city and do we really need these? Now, I know the argument is that there's a lot of money coming from the state about this. But quality of life in our community for me is more important than the 28 or 56 or, or, or 61,000 or whatever we can get per license for sales, uh, type of facilities in our community. So I just, you know, my personal feeling, which I know is not shared by many or my, by all, is that I kind of like living in a community. We don't even have, as far as I know, that many liquor stores in our community, except for the big box stores. Uh, am I wrong?
Yeah.
I mean.
I would say, yeah.
Jimmy's is not in there and the other one, you know.
I guess, where do you define our community? Because I look at it as Alpena. Um, so within the township, yes, that would also be.
I guess Alpena has already authorized at least three licenses, so why do we need any more in the township? That's, I meant, the city of Alpena has authorized, so why do we need more? And, you know, I know it's. Oh, well, one. That's all I have.
Was there support on the last?
Yes.
Norm made, who made, who said? Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I forgot to add one other minute. Don't kidding, you know, but where are these funds going to be placed when they come into township, if we pass them? I'm concerned of where these funds are gonna go if we pass this and we get money from this marijuana. Where are these funds gonna be deposited in the township and under what, what banner? They go general fund or where are they gonna go? I wanted to bring that up during the other part, but I totally.
Well, I think, I think it's a, it's a viable conversation. Uh, obviously, it would be, it would be a general fund, but that being said, this board can define how those monies are used or how they're safe. And that, that'd be another. And we can, we can, no matter what, we can put them into an account and say any expenditure from said funds would be board approved. That's pretty much how it would be going.
I'll bring that up after this.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, roll call.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
No.
Trustee Reiner.
No.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, so now moving into ordinance, uh, 150, which is the licensing ordinance, uh, Tim, you can. That's 151. 150, I do apologize. Thank you for the, the point of clarification, uh, trustee Reiner. Uh, 151, uh, we had some language that would be concurrent to one of the amendments, uh, from 150 from, uh, trustee Reiner's.
Yep, uh, that would be on page five. There's a box chart indicating what types of, uh, uses, marijuana-related uses are allowed. And currently it states marijuana micro business unlimited. So we, what, let's use Russ's format, which is a good one. Get the amendment out of the way before we decide, you know.
Oh, do you need another amendment for this one?
I'd say let's do that and keep it considered.
Then I make that same.
We have, we have a motion to amend, uh, ordinance 151, uh, page five and removing, uh, the marijuana micro business, uh, from that schedule. Is there support to the motion?
Who made the motion?
Uh, Mr. Right, trustee Reiner. It's been moved and supported, uh, for the discussion. This one was kind of straightforward. Um. Well. Oh, sorry, yes.
I think we have some other ones. We got temporary event license. Marijuana.
Those are all, those were all, I think, put in just because what happened, they're all prohibited. They're not permitted.
Yeah, this is the laundry list of all the potential types of.
Excuse me. No worries.
I don't remember reading anything in here about, uh, distances in, in this ordinance. This is really more the licensure aspect. Yes, that's the licensure aspect and the distances, uh, or zoning related issue.
Okay, very good.
So we have a motion and support on the table to, uh, remove the micro business, uh, from, uh, the schedule of licensures available within the township. Uh, seeing any further discussion, are you? Um, roll call please.
Clerk Palavich, no. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
No.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, okay, with that amendment, uh, Tim, did you have anything else to kind of, this is.
Just on, it's on the same track with the, uh, as the zoning ordinance amendment. Definitely, these ordinances belong together. Every other community I've, uh, worked with has done the same thing. Uh, this gives the details of how to apply, how to gain a license, what it costs, and the number and type of establishments allowed. So we introduced it at the last meeting, so now it would be, uh, a motion to adopt.
Uh, I'll, if, entertain a motion to move forward with the adoption, excuse me, of ordinance 151 with, uh, the proposal, with the amendments included.
I'll make a motion, move forward with ordinance number 151 as amended.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with ordinance 151 as amended. Is there support? We have motion and support. Further discussion? Uh, roll call.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yeah. Uh, moving forward on the agenda is the, uh, 2018 McCoy Miller ambulance. This was table that our, uh, previous meeting.
Yeah, if you would. Um, trustee Lappin made a comment that I thought about after, when I was doing the minutes and watching the meeting, that why don't we park the 2018 McCoy Miller ambulance and use the blazer to lessen the miles on the ambulance before we sell it? And it kind of got put, I don't know, we never talked about it and I, and I thought, well, that's a good idea.
That's brilliant.
It's a brilliant idea for a trust, still happen. Just to keep the violence down.
Not on the payroll anymore.
Yeah. He already, he and Norm saved enough money buying the two-for-one shirts. It's the same.
Mine's peach.
You're both.
They're very similar. Um, so I just thought maybe it was worth some discussion.
I wanted to dress like Michelle.
What?
I wanted to dress.
Um, yeah, and that's something for us to think about. Uh, how, how do we mitigate the potential, uh, of either incurring higher rate of miles or a unforeseen potential accident if we're, if we're looking at selling something? We have the means to still operate, so I guess.
Didn't we have that in discussion, Steve? Uh, is that something we discussed at the end?
We had, we had some brief discussion on it and I just felt as though, uh, inasmuch as these two new vehicles that we have on order, I, I don't know that they've actually made it to the, to the order point. Uh, I, I believe they're at the, sort of at the dealership point awaiting, uh, in this case for Ford, right? To, to accept it. And so it's been my experience that, um, although not with emergency vehicles, just with regular vehicles, is that once it crosses that finish line, then it gets to the manufacturing side. And assuming that all of the little extras that, uh, we've asked to have put on those vehicles are, uh, available, either through some sort of a, uh, supply chain issue, let's just assume for the sake of argument that they're all available. Uh, then what I'm finding out is that you've got about 30 days from that point and then approximately. And then approximately from the date of build to the time of shipment to the time that it gets to the dealership is probably another thirty days. And so assuming it, assuming we get that call tomorrow, the soonest we would probably see that vehicle would probably be sixty to seventy-five days. And so it just seemed reasonable to me that we that we have this ambulance sort of in the background in the event that we should need it. It it's it's likely that even if we had to put a few more miles on it, it's probably not going to impact the resale value of that ambulance because of the supply chain issues. We know that there's an issue already brewing uh in in the South China Seas, and so it just seems reasonable to me to to do to do what we're doing.
To do to continue to use the.
To to, you know, you know, maybe keep it parked as much as we possibly can to mitigate the mileage. Uh, but then if we need it in the event of the an emergency, then it's at least it's available. Whereas if we sell it, it just simply isn't available.
I I I think I'm in favor of what you're talking about because it troubles me every time I see that ambulance out and about or hard to purchase or whatever, when when I think it could probably getting ready to sell it. But I thought the chief had some uh thing to say about that when we came up in discussion. And and I thought he kind of ran it to ground, but but I think it had to do with the equipment that they carry in the chief's car. So are you suggesting, as I think you are, that we make the chief's vehicle the primary emergency response vehicle now? For medical, yeah. I think that's fine for what we're providing service of.
And we spent the money to equip that vehicle so that it could be put into service at any time. So we spent that money. Why not use it? And get as much of the ambulance as possible when we sell them.
Have the lights been fixed on the chief mobile from our last meeting?
I, as far as I knew, yes, but they I I don't think even in that last meeting were defined as they were really bad. I think they're just they.
I don't know. I I just know he said that lights had to be.
That's exactly right. That's what it was.
Yeah, and then he did talk about.
It did go out of here today with the lights.
I mean.
Probably a pretty good indication.
Could you? Could you see them?
Yes, I could from my office.
Okay, so.
I would be in favor of that.
So is there a motion to? Does somebody want to make a motion to another one effect or another?
I will second Steve's motion.
And I will, uh, I will make that motion.
Would you? Would you like to?
I'll make the motion that we that we take the two thousand eighteen McCoy Miller ambulance and uh use it as a as a secondary emergency vehicle uh only.
Behind that chief.
Yeah, behind if we're going to call it the quote unquote chief mobile.
Two thousand five Chevy Blazer.
Chevy Blazer. Thank you.
I'm.
So we have. We have a motion on the table. I do believe we have support that's awaiting further discussion. Seeing uh roll call please.
Trustee Crawl.
No.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward to the new business items.
You got a but oh, excuse me, never mind.
Okay. Uh, the first on the uh agenda is budget adjustments.
Um, Supervisor Skibby and I went through because of the assessing department being subcontracted. We needed to take all the expenses that we weren't going to use in payroll and put them into professional services. So we can pay the subcontractor out of the correct GL, and that's basically what this does.
And liquor.
We did not touch.
Oh, we didn't have to get reset.
Just question, um, does that then mean that the the professional services GL has sufficient?
It is not.
Budgeted funding.
Yet, but we have not looked at the money that was put into liquor.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement. So some of that needs to be moved over here, too.
So that those adjustments are yet to come.
Those just, we'd like to have them every meeting, because if it lost, I'll put an adjustment.
I was hoping.
No, this is. This is a big. This is a big clarification step as to our agenda or our budget as presented. This is putting everything back into the professional eight oh one zero 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 in in the assessing GL to cover the contract with Allenburg.
A quick question. I noticed that there are two per uh person, professional and consulting services, uh, two different GL codes.
The bottom two um are actually from the building.
Yeah.
Official department. Um, we needed to put something in salary payable to cover the unemployment that we need to play back to the state for our previous building official, what he collected on unemployment.
Yeah, so.
Oh, okay.
So is there? I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented.
So move.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented. Is there support?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing hearing none, roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward is uh an invoice uh from Beaver's Automotive. Um, this was identified uh by Chief Hanson as uh an emergency repair. Uh, this repair has already been conducted. This was a new radiator in our ambulance, our older ambulance to the tune of six hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-four cents. I've entertained a motion to move forward with the recommended GL two oh five six nine three eight zero 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 or an expenditure of six hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-four cents.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
It's been moved and supported for the discussion.
Yes, is that that old ambulance we keep putting money into?
That's that old.
When we getting rid of that?
Well, that would be another discussion for a a later meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
We still keeping the new one or keep or we got the old or put money into? And we're not using the old one. We're having the chief's cars up front. Yeah, but is that?
Well, one of the old ones is in in currently stationed here at Northside. So.
I mean, why can't we take the stuff out of it's necessary in the ambulance to put in the chief's car? There's that something about that. Can't that happen or that it can be used? Is it being used?
The chief's?
Chief mobile.
It has been equipped to be.
Yeah, and it's got state state license.
It's it's licensed.
So we can use it now.
Yes.
So if we can use that now, then both these ambulance should be parked.
Well, no, because we need and one emergency medical at each station.
All right, no, I'll stand back and.
So, but the old ambulance is here.
Correct.
So and the chief's vehicle is mostly here.
Correct.
Can we get that changed without a motion? I don't want to run the fire department, but you know, I really don't.
Would it make sense to run the chief mobile out of here for emergencies? Well, if the ambulance.
I would say let the chief make that determination.
Oh, no.
I mean. Okay.
You can update something next meeting.
Yeah.
We just want the new ambulance.
Yeah, yeah, we're. So we have a motion and support uh to move forward with the expenditure of six hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-four cents to be expended out of two oh five three three six nine three eight zero zero zero. Uh, further discussion? Uh, roll call please.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward to the amendment of the uh agenda, uh, trustee Polly.
Yes, I'd like the board. I'm I'm stepping down from my position as a member on the fire committee. I request the board to select another board member to take my position. I feel is very important to have three board members on the fire committee. My reason for stepping down from the fire committee is my viewpoint for the fire committee's direction is not the same as the other committee members.
So we have a recommendation from committee member trustee Polly to step down. Uh, would uh any other trustee like to take that seat of the fire committee?
I think trustee Crawl would be wonderful.
He's wearing the suit for it.
I will accept.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion uh to receive, uh, I guess it's not even a resignation. I've just entertain a motion to move forward with uh trustee Crawl replacing trustee Polly as a member on the fire commit fire department committee.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion on the table.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose the same. Uh, at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session uh to discuss pending tax tribunal litigation discussion with the township attorney. We have a motion on the table to go into closed session to discuss tax tribunal support. Uh, for the discussion.
Just a question. Can we give the folks that are remaining here uh an estimate?
Very, very short.
Say ten minutes or less.
All right, probably five minutes.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we have a motion to support, uh, although, well, actually, roll call.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes, we are now officially in closed session. Six forty, we will let.
Is there a motion?
Support.
Supported. Further discussion?
Is that the right number that we want to use?
That would be accessible.
Yeah, that's taxable and assessed value three eighty-seven five. We don't have to get it through.
Okay. Further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Less.
Sorry, uh, I made the motion and trustee Reiner supported it.
Okay, uh, moving forward, uh, this is the second opportunity for public comment. Uh, if there's any public comment in person, uh, please stand to the podium. Uh, state your name and limit yourself to three minutes.
Michael Schmansky, nine seventy-five, three never mind. Schmansky S Z Y, I mean, S B I. This is the first one, but it's on like the marijuana past. Got to appreciate Russ for trying to do something with our kids. I kind of called before and El pena has enough of them. We didn't need them. What did say in the paper today? Seventy-five percent of marijuana sold is illegal anyway, so any growers that are for medical marijuana and everything selling it on the side, we made it real easy. Next thing was the fire millage. I've been around the neighborhood and the people I talk to. I haven't heard a lot of it passing, but I was wondering on the ballot. I have this. Could it be vote for one? The fire millage assess three mills to support the fire service. I think what I read in the paper was one point one million dollar increase in tax. Yes or no? And the second part of that would be partner with the city of El pena to to provide fire service. My understanding was it was going to be about four hundred four seventy-five for five years. Each year four hundred. No increase in tax because I think we already taxed ourselves that much for fire service. Yes or no? So then you wouldn't have to bring it back if it fails. The next one may be the cheapest, frugalist way to partner with the city. And we wouldn't have another election to come up with another number. And you'd know how many people actually thought partnering with the city might be a pretty decent deal for both of us. I might overstep my bounds. I did talk to Sister Ford Bush. And he said he didn't think it was a done deal with the city. He thought it would pass. He thought it was a very good plan for the city and the township beneficial to both. I thought you guys might want to reconsider that from what I've been reading in the paper, how this seems to be a little feud on the fire department committee and the board. I mean, I know that it 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 could be jobs. I don't know how many employ them, so you know, you only hear the highlights of the rows that happen at meetings. And that's a lot of it is they were against marijuana. We voted against it. We passed it, so that's kind of strange to me.
Your thank you. Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Schmansky.
Mark Collins, seventeen fifty Bean Creek Road, Machine. Quite frankly, I'm disappointed with the decision on marijuana was made tonight. And while I respect that decision, I am more disappointed that we were not told what was on the agenda. I have never yet been to a meeting at this or where the agenda was not read so that we could know what was on the agenda and what we would be commenting on. I do take responsibility for myself not standing up and saying something at that point. But given the nature of the marijuana issue and how inflammatory it can be, I had assumed that that was going to be the issue which was discussed during closed door session. It had also been made to appear that the open forum was going to take place before the closed door session. Therefore, I assumed what I assumed that the marijuana issue would be discussed without the public in the room. And while, as I've said before, I take responsibility upon myself for not standing up and voicing laughing in them. I do believe it would be wise to make sure that in the future you ensure that the agenda has been stated and read to the audience so that they know what is to be commented on. And so that through that means you can make sure that you are hearing the voice of the people you are supposed to be representing. Thank you.
Is there any public comment online? If so, please use the bottom task bar to raise your hand or so we can identify you. Seeing none, is there any other comment in person? Moving forward, uh, discussion amongst the board with the greater good, any? It's a good segue.
Yeah, I'm used to doing that. The I'm always this way. We can't respond. I will say publicly here that to mark is that our our agendas are supposed to be on the website before the meeting. And they're also supposed to be on the shelf for people to take and have in front of them for our meetings start. That's not been done tonight. Sure it will be.
It was done tonight.
It was on the website since Thursday and Haley did it. Was it up on the screen at the beginning?
And if and if they run out, I guess. The what I interpreted Mr. Schmansky to say is that we should also, in addition to the village effort of of fire department as well as for roads passed to, to have a collection in office for both of those. I, I would just respond or indicate that he seems to be saying we should also put it to the people who vote on whether we go with the city or not. And well, we've been down the road, and we're not in a position to go down that road again, so like same as Mr. Schmansky on that is that the village itself.
Oh, I don't have my mic up. All I can say is that the, from my point of view, just as one trustee, it's not, I can't speak for the board on this, but is that if, if the village passes, we have an answer, you know, on how, how the residents want, what they want for a township, for a department. And if it doesn't pass, I think we have an answer. But I don't want to rule out other opportunities at that time or, or leverage that we have to go back to the city for a contract because that takes away other options. And I don't know if you, you didn't understand that, but, but, but I, I don't want to.
This is.
Gain us into a corner.
This is a discussion.
I know, it's for our board discussion, so that's what I would say in response to those questions. And, and finally, Mark, I would say, I don't think we're allowed to go into closed session to discuss something that's already been put on the table coming from the planning commission because it's not the type of thing that we can go into closed session for. That's all.
Further discussion, Justin?
Yes, I would like to somehow get on the agenda at a meeting soon, since this has passed, that these funds get put into a special marijuana funds, get put into a special fund that are separate from the general fund to be designated at a later date where they should go.
Well, they would be a part of the general fund, but it would be just kept separate in its own account.
That it can't be touched except for whatever this board accepts it to be.
We can, we can have that on an upcoming agenda.
Good.
Are you, I believe you had your hand up.
Do we anticipate that we would be up and running and license granted and businesses open for the marijuana thing before our next budget hearings next spring?
This, this, I don't know what potential applicants are coming into our community because there's we're only one page of a five-hundred-page dossier that they have to check through, so.
It's a lot of.
Whether or not, I, I do, I do know that I, I think I shared with everybody with the Department of Treasury's rededetermination of reimbursement for marijuana funds to each municipality is there are actually two in Presquale County, one of which has a location but has not ever even opened, and that municipality's collected for the two years that they've just had in. So I don't, I don't, to answer your question, we'll see what, what the market does, what each applicant, where they're at in that, every license, every license is going to be different from the next, really, I mean, depending on where.
Even the retail or whatever they call them, but.
Well, dispensaries.
The dispensaries, yeah, I mean.
I think everybody's the M R A as just a rulebook of how to actually navigate that, and so everything will be coming back to this board. I, we're just now, we just finally passed an ordinance after ten months that the, the planning commission worked on it. And now we have to have everything drafted, posted, ready for review, and then it's usually how long of a timeline before it's technically active.
It'll be published real soon, the notice of adoption, the regulatory ordinance takes effect when it's published and zoning ordinance according to the Act, seven days.
Seven days, I couldn't remember if it was seven days or ten days.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll have a better idea of what some of those potentials are.
And all applicants who go to planning.
Every license.
Yep.
Everyone is a special use as a commercial, it's all commercial, so everyone's a special use. And every site's going to have its own set of stipulations, I would, I would assume, so. Any other discussion for the good of the order? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion on the table to adjourn. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, Laura, with the support. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Meeting adjourned at seven oh seven. Thank you very much.